Keeping items first of all, just basically to let you know the if you would all put your microphones on mute, that'll avoid any unwanted background noise and so on and so forth. Also to let you know that we will be recording the session just to make it available on our website to people who just couldn't make it this evening. That often happens with a lot of these sessions. Time is precious to everybody. At the end, I'm going to launch a poll question. So it's going to be a question that'll go through all of you. And that'll invite you to, you know, say something, give us an opinion on what we're talking about. And the time allocated to this is roughly about forty minutes or so. And so we'll, without any further ado, I'll hand you over to our president, Colin, who will formally get things going and welcome you all. Over to you, Colin.
Thanks, John, and thanks everyone for giving their time to come and listen to us today. And we're very appreciative. And I just wanted to give, I suppose, a little bit of information on stuff that's been going on and what's coming up over the coming weeks, for the last couple of weeks and over the coming weeks. So Brexit is the bad word. It's not going away either. And last Tuesday, we had a webinar in conjunction with P W C. It was a really, really interesting webinar where they told us, you know, that really it's a waiting game for the next month or two while we see how negotiations pan out. And the worst case scenario, which is no deal, is likely. And it's recommended that businesses hope for the best but plan for the worst. And that a customs border is inevitable, no matter what the outcomes of negotiations are. And there was a really interesting, the CFO of Connolly's Redmills was on, and it was just really interesting to hear how how, you know, an exporting business like them is planning for Brexit and ensuring that they have, you know, between four to six months stock over in the UK warehoused and ready. So that was really good. And we have on the twenty first of October, I think, we have a Chambers chat coming up with Beta, which is the British Irish Trading Alliance, a gentleman called Paul Whitnall, who was based in Kilkenny for a long number of years and was made redundant from his job back in, I think, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Moved to London and established Beta. And really what it does is it connects British businesses with Irish businesses so that Irish business with them. And it's a really, really good news story. Now, obviously, he was hugely affected by by Covid and also is being hugely affected by Brexit. But it's really interesting to see how how, you know, he started up that organisation and and the amount of business that he has facilitated between British and Irish businesses in the short time that he's been doing it is incredible. So Paul will be kind of telling his story, and that's on the twenty first of October. Is that right, John?
Twenty second. It's Thursday the twenty second.
I apologize. Twenty second of October. So we'll be sending out invitations to everyone, and that'll be that'll be a very interesting chamber chat that we're going to have with regard to the budget on the thirteenth of October. And we have been, we have been meeting with ministers locally and indeed we're on a call, a Zoom call tomorrow with Pascal Dunhu to introduce him to the to the Chamber's budget submission for twenty twenty one. And myself and Marion also met with Malcolm Noonan last week, and I have a meeting with John McGuinness next week. So really, you know, we'll be informing them of what the Chamber believes is needed to protect business, especially in towns and cities like Kilkenny. And that's, you know, what's, what's needed to develop economic growth and sustain the cities and the communities, develop industry, innovation and infrastructure. So there's loads to talk about, and I would encourage you, if you get an opportunity to go onto our website, kilkennychamber.ie, and download the the budget submission, the budget twenty twenty one submission. Well worth a read just to see what we're saying and what we're looking for. And finally, Christmas is around the corner and it's going to be a big opportunity for, for some retailers, hospitality businesses in particular, to get them through the beginning of, the beginning of twenty twenty one. And so we'll be, we have been talking to different stakeholders and tourism retail in the the Tourism Task Force, the city, the Town Centre Task Force, Leo and the County Council with regard to it. And I know Tim is going to touch on Christmas as well, but we'd encourage everyone to get involved and be part of it. So without further ado, I've listened to Tim tell us tell me before about all the projects that are going on, and I'm really excited about it, and I hope you, and I'm sure you will be too. So without further ado, Tim, we'll leave it, we'll leave it up to you to tell us everything that's going on.
Okay, thanks, Colin. John, I think John has a presentation that he's going to bring up here that'll guide you through it. And I think I know most people on it. My name is Tim Butler. I'm Director of Services in County County Council. I have responsibility for roads, water, carpet and H R, and I have responsibility for the city as well. And I suppose that's a great focus for me from here myself. And I have a great interest in the city and the development of Kilkenny as a city and I suppose both economically and for somewhere culturally to live and for communities as well. I'm supported in the city by Ian Gardner, the city engineer, who would have done a lot of work over the last year in relation to Covid matters and other matters and any improvements you would have seen in the city as well. So really what I'm going to do, and the main focus here is on the city. But there are other works going on throughout the county as well that I will touch on at the end. So I'm going to look at the various works that are currently underway that we have funding for. The works that we have funding secured for, but that are not underway yet. Projects for which funding applications have been made, and we'd be quite hopeful of getting money for them. And then I suppose the presentation is mainly visual, and I've tried to group related projects together. And what I'm concentrating on here, there's a myriad of other services that we provide as well. I'm not touching on our roadworks programme, our maintenance of roads, which is twenty nine million this year. Our street cleaning for city and our scheduled towns, the environmental services and housing and so on and so forth. So I'm concentrating on the core projects that we do here itself. Just to start off, you'll all be aware, after a lot of lobbying, we got the National Transport Authority to put in the City Bus Service here in Kilkenny, which has operated since December last year. Unfortunately, Covid had a major impact on that, on the numbers that are using it or able to use it at the moment. But we hope that as the pandemic passes, that it will increase. We have at the moment a lot of works done around the city and county, and the last bit of work that we have to do is the installation of bus stops and bus shelters themselves. And you will be all aware of Butler Gallery. I hope you got a chance to look at it this year, that opening quarter two of this year. It's a free activity and it encourages all locals and any visitors. I think it's a huge attraction for any visitors to Kilkenny City and County as well. And the next thing that's, it's, and it's slow to come in here, but the public realm on Parliament Street is funding we got last year. We have most of the work done at this stage. There's a small bit of work to be done at the Markacross. But we'll be holding off on that until the new year because we've got funding for works on Arman Street as well, which I'll cover later on in this presentation, and we have to have that finished by the end of the year. Two other projects that we have funding for as well, which will be starting early next year and hopefully complete by June next year, is the demarcation. On the left hand side, you'll see the little dots on the various roads as you come into the city. And we're demarking them and kind of highlighting them as shared, shared surface for cars, pedestrians and bikes as well. They're all thirty kilometre an hour zones, and we will be marking them, I suppose, so that people know that they're entering an area that they should take care and watch out for pedestrians, cyclists and so on and so forth. And on the left, it shows a cycleway and off, mostly off-road cycleway from the eastern environs, the likes of up from, I suppose, Nolan Park and beyond the Johnswell Road down into the city centre, which will bring you right down to Lady Desert Bridge without really having to go on, on the roadway. And we will be trying to do that from each of the four north, south, east and west throughout the city as well, once we have this project completed. Okay, that's the second one there. So you can move on, John. Future projects that we have going on, and at the moment we have a part eight planning on the way for Vicar Street. Where it's probably one of the poorest footpaths in the city centre. Vicar Street wouldn't have had any work done to it for up to forty years. The roadway is also quite narrow as well. So that is proposed to be made one way into town. It's up for for, it's out for public consultation at the moment, and Friday is the closing date for that. And we will be significantly upgrading that as well, and we will have cycleways, a counterflow cycleway. In other words, you'll be able to cycle into town and out of town with your own lane and the road traffic. The traffic will be coming in one way from that as well. And we also, I suppose, have planning for a one-way and an upgrade of Arman Street, which is badly needed. And we've secured funding for that now as well, and you will see some work starting on that before, before the end of the year. But we're happy that, I suppose, we've secured funding to do that full, full job now at this stage. It was in doubt until quite recently. And that came in under an Act of Travel, the Act of Travel Fund that was, that was brought forward by government. And we're doing a lot of other works throughout the county and city as well, such as pedestrian pedestrian crossings and different things like that throughout the city and county as well. Works that we don't have funding for as well would be, we're looking to upgrade Kieran Street and the St Mary's Lane precinct in around the medieval Mile Museum and to bring a bit of life back into that lane. And we will be looking at other laneways throughout the city subsequent to that as well. We're also looking for, seeking funding, and we have plans in place for improvements to the, around the Carnegie Library. The Barrack Street, Barrack Lane entrance into the Butler Gallery as well, which links you straight onto John Street, which should encourage a little bit of activity from there onto John Street as well. And we're also looking, as I say, at other cycle routes. We're doing the one from Johnswell Road into the city. We have funding for that at the moment, and we're applying for Lockby into the city centre now as well, and we follow on with the others as well. And you'll all be aware of some of the Covid measures that we would have done, starting, I suppose, in May this year. And it's due to be put in place a one-way system to facilitate social distancing, and that's one way on Rosin Street and High Street. And it allows for extra pedestrian, pedestrian areas on both sides of the road. And I think it has been widely welcomed by, by the public. And I know that there are some concerns about it with businesses as well, but we will be entering further discussions with them on that over the coming weeks. The farmer, farmers' markets, we had them on weekends, and we have, that will continue on at least until the end of October. We have artists on the Mayor's Walk. We introduced additional pedestrianisation on James's Street and extended the hours of pedestrianisation on Kieran Street. And we put outdoor seating areas, which were very successful in Parliament Street, in the Market Yard. And we put in permanent, additional permanent limestone seats on the Mayor's Walk there. You would, you might have seen them over the last two days that they have been just put in place yesterday. Actually, they were completed. And I went up there at lunchtime today, and every one of them has been utilised. So they have been a great success. We also made changes to some of the parking areas. Obviously, with no buses coming into the city centre, we allowed for street parking on the Castle Road, and we changed the parking regime in Wolfton Street to encourage people to, I suppose, to, to short-stay people to come in and do their business in John Street. The previous slide just showed you a few pictures, and you can look at them in your own time, of the just of the pedestrianized James's Street, the market yard area and the parade element as well, just for your own information. Other measures, I suppose, that we're doing, and all this has been done to try and encourage people safely back into the city centre. We have Kilkenny Day. This is something that we, I suppose, we're reintroducing. It's a very short time span between our thought of doing it, and I suppose Kilkenny Day falls on the eleventh of October. So it's a very short time span. I'd ask you to go onto our websites or go onto the Kilkenny Day website and look for the information on it. There's loads of activities throughout the city and county. And we're really trying to encourage people to come out and forth, to come in safely into the city centre during during that day and for other days as well. Wolf Walker Month, we've been working with Kilkenny Animate and Cartoon Saloon in relation to Wolf Walker Month. And you'll see that there's a projection onto the side of the canal walk wall from the River Court, and that will be running from eight to ten every, every evening for the whole month of October. And I know there's premiere of the Wolf Walker film as well as being shown in the I M C. So we've been involved with that with Animate and with Cartoon Saloon. And what we're doing, and I suppose the Kilkenny Task Force would have been more knowledge, or would have more knowledge about it than this, than most, but we're redeveloping our kilkenny.ie website. If you go onto it at the moment, it's not very user friendly. So we're redeveloping that and making it an umbrella website to showcase the best that Kilkenny has to offer for taste, for mating, Kilkenny, for retail, from, from every aspect that will attract both locals and, and outside visitors into the city centre as well. And in conjunction with that, we're doing a whole rebranding exercise. So in total, it's costing us almost eighty thousand for both. And it's something, I suppose, that we want everybody to get behind. And we will be launching that on Kilkenny Day. It's putting us under a little bit of pressure to do it, but we're launching that on the eleventh of October. We're involved with the, with the Craft Council as well in relation to this the Connect Sculpture Trail throughout the, throughout the city during the summer months, again, to track people into the area as well. And things that we're looking at into the future as well, as we're looking at done more for as a diversity park, the former landfill out there, so that we will have a walk out to that today, and we'll have a biodiversity park out there as well. And of course, Colin has mentioned Christmas. It's a difficult one for us this year. We are in consultation with the Chamber and Leader, hopeful that we will be able to provide some significant additional lighting on the parade and on the parade and some uplighting of the trees along the parade as well to showcase Kilkenny. I think it will have a certain wow factor, but we know there's a lot of other things that we have to do, and we're, we have a meeting arranged just internally here with and with our Yule Fest organizer, Paula Lawler, for Monday. And we're going to try and see what community events and what other events we can, we can, I suppose, run this year safely. We've had, have had a number of discussions with people, but we would welcome any, I suppose, suggestions that any of the Chamber have, or any of the Kilkenny Task Force or anybody else has that we could consider for that moving courage, I suppose, people into the city for the Christmas period. Another project that I suppose we're awaiting funding on as well is the redevelopment of the Talcel, a tourist attraction underneath in the dungeons, the Dungeon Experience. And on the mayor, you know, a history of the mayors of Kilkenny as well. But we would also be retaining, I suppose, the civic function there. Our municipal district meetings are held in the, in the Talcel, and that would continue. So we're awaiting a funding announcement from Foch Ireland on that. Okay. Yeah. The other thing that we have funding for as well is we have funding to, to to uplift or to light up a number of our historic buildings throughout the city, including the Talcel that I've shown you here today, here on the left-hand side. The castle is included in that as well. Grace's Castle or the courthouse. And the Butler Gallery, St Canis's Cathedral and a number of other, the medieval Mile Museum, and other, a number of other venues throughout the city as well. And these will be lit to a certain specification, and it will be possible, I suppose, to change the colours on them to suit different events, be it Bastille Day or Patrick's Day or whatever, we can light them up in green. So, so we're hopeful that that will start in the new year, and we have funding of seven hundred and fifty thousand. God for that, with match funding from, of two hundred thousand from the local authority itself. So that project, as I say, is well underway, and we would hope that we will be commencing work on that early in the new year. We also received five hundred thousand from Foch Ireland for orientation strategy. And what that will do is it will make improvements to the parade junction to encourage people, particularly when the buses return, that when they come into the city, they're welcomed down past the parade, past the Mayor's Walk, and that they visit all the different retail outlets and attractions that we have throughout the city as well. We have too many coach tours come in here and don't come down past the parade. So it's improvements to that junction that will, will hopefully, I suppose, bring people down along the medieval mile and onto all the other attractions throughout the city itself. And that also includes, I suppose, funding for signage, a revised map, which has been done in conjunction with the kilkenny.ie website and the rebranding. And we hope that will, I suppose, bring, bring visitors and retain them for a day at least, or maybe overnight as well if we can. And as I say, we got a half million of a grant towards that, and there's two hundred thousand of funding from the city itself for that as well. The next one in the picture will appear here on the right-hand side as well. You can see the area there marked in yellow is out the Callan Road. That's the western environs or the Braga Valley area. That is the next area for, for significant housing development within the city. At the moment, there's quite a little bit of disruption on the Callan Road and the Calmanna Road as the link road is, and the infrastructure, the water and public lighting, et cetera, is put in for that link road that brings you across to the front of that site itself. But those works should be finished in quarter one this year, and we have a number of planning applications in for houses in that area already. And you can see the proximity of it to the Abbey Quarter, I suppose, which is going to be quite a large area for employment over the next, next number of years. And as Kilkenny has developed, you can see the way it has developed with Lockby developed first and the eastern environs of Johnswell Road. Now it's the western environs here on the Callan roadside, and the final area to be developed will be the Lockmacasc area or the Tullar Owen Road area. So what we're trying to do is make Kilkenny or develop Kilkenny as a ten-minute city that for most areas within Kilkenny, you can walk into the city centre within ten minutes. And all these new areas will have, I suppose, built-in cycle routes as well, off-road or segregated from, from the, the traffic as well. So you can move on there, John. Yeah. And the next one is just going to concentrate, I suppose, on the Abbey Quarter itself. And if you look at the, the green areas here are being developed as we speak. And the Horse Barrack Lane and the Brew, the Brew House are being developed at the moment. And on the right-hand side, down near the river, the Riverside Park and Skate Park are being developed at the moment as well. These are the phase one developments within the Abbey Quarter itself. And the pink area, which we have applied to Embor Panola for planning at the moment, is the park area around the St Francis Abbey and the Urban Street, which will be predominantly pedestrian, and it will not be a true road. So the, the, the urban street that will allow for development on the left and right-hand side of the Abbey Quarter over the coming years. Okay, so you can see here, it's just highlighted, and we can run through it fairly quickly. The Mayfair Public Realm area will front on to what is now going to be the library, the city library and the Mayfair. The Brew House is marked there, which is well under construction at this stage. And if any, you take a walk down Horse Barrack Lane, I think, or down the Peace Park, you'll see that huge work has gone on over the last number of weeks. And Horse Barrack Lane will be developed once that, as that project is, is developing as well. And that's just a visual of the Brew House on the left-hand side, and you can see on the right-hand side, the Riverside Walk being developed. Okay, so the Riverside Walk and the Skate Park are to be completed in quarter four this year and open in quarter four this year. So I skipped down through these fairly quickly. Now the rest of my hope. And the Brew House should be completed by quarter two in twenty twenty. And the sorry, no. And the Brew House and the Mayfair will be developed as a library subsequent, that the work should start on the Mayfair Library early next year. That's that one there. And that's the plaza area in front of it onto, onto Parliament Street. The redevelopment of the two tea houses down at the river as well, that will be completed in quarter three twenty twenty one. And again, we have funding for that. And the phase two, this is just a repeat of the earlier, the earlier slide, which just shows you the, the Abbey Quarter, the next stage of the Abbey Quarter, which we're applying for planning permission for on now. And this is a kind of a visual image of how that urban street will look down on the Abbey Quarter itself. Okay, and that's another visual of how the park, which will be a huge addition, I think, to the city centre, will look. And it will be available for a myriad of events, and we're hopeful that we will get in some kind of a covered area and that as well, that will facilitate outdoor events at all times for the different festivals that we have. We've also worked quite closely with the Gardi. Obviously, we have a lot of assets put into Kilkenny, a lot of infrastructure. And we also have a lot of visitors into the city, into the city itself. So it's vital that they're safe when they're in the city itself. So we're, we're developing and funding or the, the, sorry, should I say, the Gardi have developed a CCTV system for the city, which we are funding or the members are funding here, and that will be put in place. And we have a number, about twenty cameras at the moment, and there'll be another twenty cameras put in at strategic locations throughout the, the city over the coming years. We're also, I suppose, in Kilkenny, foolishly enough, where we put our hand up to do a lot of other work other than, than in our own county. So we're actually the lead authority for the retrofitting, the LED retrofitting of all the public lights throughout the eastern region. So we're the lead authority for nine authorities in the east, including Carlow, Kilkenny, Westmead and up as far as Loud as well. So you can see the difference, the light makes, I suppose, to road safety and to, I suppose, security of people walking along streets. But also, I suppose, the biggest impact is in the energy efficiency, the saving of up to two thirds of the cost of the old sunlights, which are all being replaced. And just to broaden it out, just to show you a little bit of what's going on throughout the rest of the county as well. There's a thirteen million euro project being done, which we secured eight and a half million funding for. The Kenny Greenway, which will connect from New Ross to Water down in the south of the county. And we're hopeful that we will be able to continue that and bring that up through St Mullins and Great Amman into the future as well. So work has started on that at the moment. And we're continually working on Woodstock. It's, it's, it's enormous, I suppose, amenity in the county. And we're, we're, I suppose, trying to improve the paths and that down there to make it accessible to all. And I think it's, it's always worth a visit for any visitors or for locals throughout the county. Okay. And there's also, I suppose, work going on. We're making improvements to the streets, Low Street and Logan Street in Thomastown, if there's anyone from that direction on the call. And we're also doing work to the Session House down there. There's about three million of an investment in that area itself. Callan has not been left out either. We're doing a walkway around the Moorfield in Callan. And that's nearing completion at the moment. And we've also just completed the regeneration project of the Fair Green in Callan, which adjoins the soccer pitch and the G A pitch there in, in Callan, and it's an enormous amenity for the area itself. From a roads perspective, and this is just to give you the, the scale of some of the works that we would be involved in. Obviously, Wexford were the lead authority on the capital project for the Rose, the Rose Kennedy Fitzgerald Bridge in, in the south of the county, which, which bypasses the New Ross and makes it much easier, I suppose, to get from Wexford into Kilkenny and Watford. And we're continuing on with works on the N twenty five to improve the road from the, the Kilkenny Side Junction in, on the New Ross bypass across to Watford itself. And that's we are the lead authority on that as well, and that's a hundred and ten million euro project, and we expect the line of that road to be announced in the coming month. And we're also the lead on the N twenty four Watford Care Scheme, which is a six hundred million euro scheme. It will probably be a motorway and will link on, link Watford to Limerick. So it will connect, I suppose, it will, will provide significant connectivity from our Bellevue Port, which is the largest load-on, load-off port in, in Ireland with Limerick and New Ross and Wexford as well. And that is a huge economic driver within the county of Kilkenny. We're also would have carried out works on, from Balance Lee to Durrell previously. We're straining quite a dangerous stretch of road there, and we have funding now to improve the road from Ballyragget to Balance Lee. That work should be going to, to Embor Panola for planning in the coming weeks. And we're also carrying out two significant improvements on a dangerous stretch of roads down on the N twenty four in Mooncain, at Mooncain Village and for two kilometres out of it, and at Pilltown as well, where there has been significant issues in the past. So that just gives you a little bit of a scale of the works. Apologies if it was too long. I know John will make it available to we, subsequent to this meeting. So I'll hand back to you there, John, now, and I hope it wasn't too long and didn't bore you too much.
No, that was, that was fantastic, Tim. Fantastic. Really, really. I don't know how you managed to get through so much information in the, the short amount of time that we had allocated for our session this evening. But it just goes to show, I mean, we all take for granted that, you know, a road gets resurfaced or, you know, a new roundabout gets put in or whatever. And but there's a huge amount of planning, a huge amount of money involved and behind all these things. And indeed, it's an ongoing challenge to, to, to do exactly that. And, and I know that you mentioned about, you know, some of the schemes and programmes that you have funding acquired and I know that you mentioned about, you know, some of the, the schemes and programs that you have funding acquired and confirmed for. And that there's a number of other schemes that you would like to do, but that you don't have funding yet. And indeed, one thing that a lot of people mightn't be aware of is when funding is achieved or approved, the local authority has to match fund to, you know, varying degrees. It could be 10%, 20%, 40%. And in these financially challenged times that we're in, for a local authority that has, is having to waive rates and, you know, provide extra kind of expensive changes to its towns and cities and so on, to match funding in those situations is, is quite a challenge. And that is actually something which we've engaged with Tim and his colleagues in the County Council. We've had discussions on that and we, as a chamber, have raised it at national level as a lobbying point. It's something that, you know, the government needs to be aware of. And that's something that we're working on at the moment as well, to see if we can, you know, get, get improvements in that. To get, to ask any county council at this stage to match fund anything more than 10% is a big ask. And, and you know, that, that's kind of part of the conversation. So at this stage, I'll open it up as well. If anybody has a question that they'd like to push, please just unmute and put up your hand and, and ask your question. And while you're thinking of doing that and preparing yourself to do that, I have a, a question prepared in advance myself, which I'd like to put to you all. It's a poll question. And the question is kind of a would you believe it type of question. And it should be there in front of you on your screens now. Did you know that the chamber's Kilkenny gift vouchers are accepted in more Kilkenny businesses than One For All? And that they are less costly, always retain their full value and effectively have no expiry date? Did you know that? Okay, so we're the entity that runs the Kilkenny gift voucher scheme. And it is solely aimed at getting people to do their shopping and supporting local businesses and shops. So it'd be interesting to see if you were aware of their existence, but also that they stand up very, very well to alternative gift voucher programs. In particular, the One For All, which is, that's the automatic default one that we all hear about and, and, and that. But I'm going to end the poll now and give you the result. And the result is 67% of you did not know that. So at least we've achieved something by sharing another piece of information with you all. So our president Colin, I'd invite you back in if you have anything more to say or would like to. Don't see any questions. And so obviously, Tim, your presentation was so comprehensive that there are no questions.
John, can I just ask one very simple question, I suppose? The, obviously, you've mentioned about all of the things that you do have funding for, Tim. But COVID bounty, I suppose, must have had a, a large effect on the finances of the council. So I suppose what is being affected from, from your point of view? You're, you're on mute there, Tim.
Now, yeah, I suppose, from our own point of view, we, we were quite lucky. We, we have a fairly good track record in securing projects and completing them in time for, and that's always bodes well with the department. So for a lot of our capital works, I mean, we would have got one of the highest allocations in the Urban Development Fund for the Abbey Quarter. But all that takes match funding and we're committed to that. We don't have a choice in that garden. So we, we, we have a 20% contribution to make to that and we have no choice in it. We have to borrow for that. The likes of things that we're, we're looking at at the moment is we, we still don't know what, what we're going to be, what, what funding the department are going to give us for our day to day services. So for the likes of our street cleaning, for our road maintenance, the, the portion that's, that's delivered from our own local funding, we still don't know what we're going to, to get from that. But we reckon we're going to be about 3 million down on that. Now, on the positive side, during the lockdown, we were able to restrict services. We, we changed our operating hours for street cleansing and, and we, our bin collection was all reduced and all that. So there's a certain amount of saving that we made there. But certainly by the end of this year, I, I would imagine we'll have a deficit of about 2 million. So unless that's made up by the, by the government, services such as our amenities, our ability to maintain the city looking as well, or any of our scheduled towns, the amount that we're able to put into our local, local roads and that would, would impact on the, the county more than the city. That will, that will all be impacted next year. But as we speak at the moment, we've set aside about two and a half million that we haven't spent and won't be spending until we know whether the government are going to, to fund us or not. Some of that is discretionary monies for works that we would have planned on maybe pedestrian crossings in Freshford or Orlingford. And some of them within the city centre itself and we're, and other ones we will be putting off. So as far as possible, we will be keeping, keeping our essential services going. But there certainly will be a reduction in the amount we're able to do in certain areas.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Tim, can I ask, I mean, I know that, that Kilkenny Day is, is this month and Wolf Walker Month is October and there's plenty going on. And hopefully next month, we'll have, we'll have some of the festivals going ahead, whether they're able to or not. There's another thing, but I, I know they're still planning to. With regard to Christmas time, like I, I suppose it's good, there's the, the fact that Winterfell will be going on in Waterford will mean that it'll be really important for us to, to have something in the, in, in the town centre to, to keep shoppers and keep people, keep people coming in. If someone has an idea or a proposal or something, who is the best person to speak to? I mean, is Paula Lawler? The best person to go to directly or is there someone else?
Yeah, look, it, it will be Paula probably. Look, we're talking to Paula on Monday. We're, we're obviously going to be scaling back. We're not going to have the major concerts like we did in the previous years with Vladimir, Ronan Tyne and the different things of that, which does attract people into the city centre. Those type of events will not be happening this year. So what we're, we're doing is we're doing a little bit of brainstorming on Monday. And certainly if you can email into, we have a yulefest.ie, we, I, I, I make it available to you afterwards. We, we'll reactivate the Yule Fest email. Paula will be on it and our communications team here as well, Catherine Cooney and Deirdre Dunn. So we're going to sit down, but we would welcome any suggestions that any of the businesses would have. We obviously have put in funding applications for, to run another shop local campaign around Christmas. We would do that anyway. But it'd be better if we got a little bit of money, money for it. We're very grateful to the chamber for putting their hands up and I think this, the, the additional significant lighting that we'll have on the parade will certainly attract people as well. But I'm not sure the extent that Winterfell are going to do things in Waterford this year. But I suppose we're reluctant and public health advice would be at the moment that we shouldn't have any amusements or anything like that on the parade. Now, should that change? Or we, we will be looking at it as well. But we want to have a very, very strong reason or very strong backup, I suppose, and the, the, the okay of, of the HSE, who we're regularly on calls with in relation to COVID, if we're going to do something like that. But certainly, we won't be letting Christmas pass and we will be putting whatever resources we have into it. And we would absolutely welcome any suggestions. And I know Gareth is on, on the call here and I will be talking to Gareth after my conversation with Paula on Monday as well.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Now, I perhaps just suggest that Marion Sannery has done extraordinary work, I think, in terms of creative programming for Kilkenny Day, given the limited time she had and the resources that she's got to actually work with. I should say, I, I know Marion's so good exposure there, but I do think she's got an extraordinary talent and ability to program creatively. And I think the quality of ideas is going to be a real key in trying to do anything that's a success for bringing football up to High Street and animating Christmas in Kilkenny. So I'm just saying that, Tim and John.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that. And I've, I've worked with both, but I suppose and Marion has done quite a bit of work with us as well around Patrick's Day and obviously with Kilkenny, Kilkenny Day as well. We're, we're, I suppose, bound by tendering processes and different things like that as well. So we're, we're, we have to be conscious of that. But I do think we won't be short of ideas for Christmas and we certainly will be doing whatever we can to make it as attractive as we can for anybody who wants to visit or to encourage people to visit Kilkenny City and County. Because Yule Fest is, is a countywide thing as well. We will be trying to have programs in Thomastown, Castle Comer with the Festival of Lights and Great Managh and other areas like that as well in Callan.
Yeah.
Love the uplighting idea, Tim, that you referenced earlier on. I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, and, and that, and look again, it's, it's the chamber and leader, I suppose, as well. We have to thank for that. And hopefully that will come off. But the lights will not only be available for Christmas, those uplights will be available at any time of the year and they can be programmed as well for, for different types of lighting. So I think it'll be fantastic on the parade, yeah.
Brilliant. And, and that's an important thanks, Liz, for that observation because it is important to acknowledge there's a huge amount of work being done and certain people and certain entities are making tremendous efforts, you know, for, for all of our benefits, you know. And, and yeah, there is a huge amount of collaboration going on behind the scenes between, Tim just mentioned there, the County Council, the Chamber, the Kilkenny Leader Partnership and many others as well, you know, and that's important work. And it, it needs support and it needs to be acknowledged. And that's part and parcel of what, what this evening is about as well. So it's great to have you guys all here as well, sharing this. And, and do let everybody know, you know, that you meet as well, that all these things are going on. And there's always a suggestion box not very far away, looking for new ideas. Okay, anybody got any other contributions to make or any other suggests? Edmund?
Edmund here. So, Tim, just a quick comment. It's a real achievement when you look at what you've done in Kilkenny. Like, there's a plan and there's a master plan. And I think what's unique about Kilkenny is you're, you're, you have a vision of where you want to take it. You know, it's been done over 10, 20, 30 years now, but it's lovely to see the cake getting better and better the whole time. Like, it's really a European world-class city. So it's something you, you guys should be very proud of. And it's amazing when you talk to tourists during the summer, the amount of people that take photographs of the, the bridge and the flowers is phenomenal. Like, it's, it's really well done.
And that's just a nice precursor to Kilkenny Day. Kilkenny proud, man.
Yeah, and look, thanks for that. And because, look, I suppose, it is that, that we have to, and I even, I suppose, and it was said to me recently enough as well, that we, we want to, we strive to be the best. We want to be the best. Even our tidy towns here, keep Kilkenny beautiful. We're not saying get Kilkenny beautiful. We're saying keep Kilkenny beautiful. And that's what we need to do. I suppose the local authority with the support of the likes of KKB and different people and everybody else, all the communities, that's the only way you're able to, to keep these things going, you know, so. And I suppose, you're right, the way the city has been planned since the seventies, that has kept, kept going. And it's still a very important way for the city to be planned and make sure that it develops in, in a, in a strategic way that allows people to walk or cycle or drive if we have to into town, you know what I mean? So it's, that's hugely important to us all.
And Tim Butler Gallery is phenomenal. Like, you know, when you look at it, we never knew it was there. Now you see it and you, you put a lot of acid into it. It's, it's really very well done.
And you can give it your name.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's fantastic. Liz, your finger, you have your hand up?
John, can I, I am here with two hats on. Can I just highlight the fact that the Irish Business Design Challenge is a new initiative from the Design Crafts Council of Ireland that hasn't been done before. It's for local Leo enterprises and Enterprise Ireland clients and members. And it's open to micro, small and medium enterprises. There's a prize fund of 50,000 and essentially the competition is about acknowledging how businesses have dealt with the challenges they've had to cope with through COVID, looking at the solutions they designed and what they managed to put in place to cope with that. So it's a very short and straightforward application process. There's key, there's four key questions on the website. It's open for applications. The deadline is the 28th of October. It's a nationwide competition. So I'd encourage all members to spread the word within your own companies or to families, friends or peers who are involved in any micro, small or medium enterprises.
And can you remind us of the website address again, Liz?
Sure, it's d c c i dot ie, John.
Perfect.
Yeah, and we're all very active on Twitter as well. So if you'd like to share any of the posts that we're putting up, we'd really appreciate that. And it's not about the financial growth or employment. It's literally about businesses sustaining where they are and looking at what they've had to do to adapt and innovate during the times that we're in.
Super, super. Thanks very much for that, Liz. When, when you all signed on this evening, we promised that we'd have you home and finished up. Well, maybe you're home already. But that we'd finish anyway, this session within about 40 minutes or so. So we're going to sign off now. I want to thank, most sincerely, our speaker, Tim Butler, who put a huge presentation there together. Congratulations on the content and all the work that's being done. Really, really interesting. And I want to thank our president Colin O'Hearn for participating as well. I'm paid to do this job. Colin has another job to do and he's, really appreciate his stewardship, you know, for, for his tenure. And, and thanks very much for that, Colin. And very much thank you guys for coming along and being part of our session this evening. Tell people about it. It's really important that these sessions happen. We're always open to new ideas and, you know, giving a platform to speakers who are, you know, contributing to the Kilkenny Inc efforts. And so, so do get in touch if, if you have an idea. And so best of luck to everybody. Thanks for coming. We look forward to you coming to our next event.